Good evening, everyone. This is Binghamton City Council Work Session. Today is Monday, June 16th. It is 6:02 PM and I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss. Councilmember Matavetsky. Councilmember Rathma.
Present.
Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
So the first thing on our agenda tonight is in the Finance Committee. The Chair of the Finance Committee is Councilmember Robert Kavanaugh. We're on RL 25-104 and our presenter is Billy Goodson. Come on down, Billy.
Good evening.
Hello, Billy. All right. What broke and what do we need to fix it?
Actually, nothing really. I mean, it's a combination of things. Requesting increase for the vehicle repair line. Part of our process is to take dump trucks up to Broom County landfill and they have a stump in the construction area. So we had several tires that needed repair this year that we hadn't planned on. So that's the reason for the increase on that line. The equipment lease rental line. I'm not sure if you remember the emergency repair that we had to the pumps the end of last year. They came in in January. So the crane rentals came out of our 2025 budget. And we also have an MSA agreement for our gas detection monitors and the amount increased by $2,000 this year.
What rental equipment was needed for the?
Crane.
Crane.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to ask Billy? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Billy.
Thank you.
Next is RL 25-105. It is in the Finance Committee. The Councilmember Robert Kavanaugh is the Chair of, and Megan Hyman and Chief Al Gardner, I guess, will be the presenters.
Hello.
Hello.
Would you like us to give an overview?
Yes.
Okay, RL 25-105. So this is to amend the fiscal year 50 CDBG budget and transfer unspent funds to support the purchase of two emergency response med vehicles for the fire department as well as approximately two dozen sets of turnout gear. So the Chief can certainly speak more in depth on both of these, but just to give an overview, the two vehicles will help firefighter paramedics respond quickly to the citywide medical calls that they receive and ensure the department has the capacity to respond to increasing call volumes. And then the turnout gear, I'm sure you're all familiar with. This is the gear that the firefighters wear on, while responding to fire calls. It's what protects them from extreme heat, smoke, other toxic chemicals. National standards require that gear to be replaced every 10 years. So obviously critical to get these things into the mix. In your packet is a letter from the Union President detailing the need for some of these equipment purchases and the Chief and I are happy to hear any questions as well.
I guess I have a question of what other items were considered when you were looking at this pot of money?
Projects?
Yeah, so I think we knew the need for the turnout gear and the two vehicles for the fire department. So they kind of rose to the priority.
I think I have questions and comments that I'd say fall into two categories. First regarding the unspent funds themselves and second related to the fire department needs. The unspent funds, so we're looking at 357,000 plus. And we have repeatedly, as a council, asked for a full accounting of unspent CDBG funds. The last response I recall receiving was that isolating such a report is complicated, that technically there are no consistently available funds. But with this request, and then earlier this year when about 80,000 of unspent funds appeared, clearly there is an abundance of unspent funds. So I think what I would like to very specifically request is a full audit and accounting of unspent CDBG home ESG and COVID-related dollars. Because I don't know how we would move a request forward with an alleged available unspent amount if we don't know what other unspent funds and potentially available funds there are. And I want to be very clear, I am not willing to move forward any requests that allocates alleged unspent CDBG dollars until that full report is completed and submitted to council. The question that I have, just because I am intimately familiar with CDBG home and ESG budgets, the $145,000 that's identified in the unspent outline in quote contractual services, can you speak? That would have been from '46 and '47. Can you speak to what those contractual services were for, please?
Sure, and I'll speak to the first part of your, I guess, your request too. Steve Carson is here tonight to present along with me later on on the fiscal year 51 budget. So I think he can speak then maybe a little bit more in detail about, you know, how he and his staff go about doing regular audits of the expenditures and the allocations. Obviously, this happens on a rolling basis. So when we allocate funding, it's not often that the entire allocation is spent by those agencies all at once or all those agencies are spending it at the same time. So as you've mentioned, we've come down to council before with requests to transfer unspent funds. That's part of the work that Steve does to audit what's out there and make sure that those dollar lines are not just hanging out there indefinitely and they're being spent down in a timely fashion.
I'm sorry. I didn't want, I didn't mean to cut you off. I understand that you don't find out right away, but still, we're still not being told that there is extra funds. So before, like, once you find out that there is money left over, we should be notified as council that the money is left over. You think that's kind of where we're missing our part? Because you know, you're not sure when that happens, but once that does happen, we're not being told anything until we get this, like, right away. So then to us, that's a shock. And then that looks like there's something that's going on. So like, the line of communication is very poor when it comes to that.
And $357,000 is no small amount and these are critical funds for vulnerable communities.
So if I could respond to Councilwoman Middleton's point, because I think that gives me some clarity and we may be looking at this two different ways. It's not that, you know, these were surprise funds that were found. These, this is part of the process that what happens when a department comes to us in the middle of a budget near year and says we have these needs for med vehicles or we have these needs for turnout gear for firefighters. We'll work with Steve Carson and his team to see, are there funds out there, older dollars that haven't been spent? Have we been in contact with those agencies? We anticipate, for whatever reason, if the project is stalled, that this isn't moving forward, that these funds are no longer needed so that we can find the funding to support the project.
So I have a clarifying question, right?
Let me just finish, just one more, one more thing. No, so I do understand that though. But from my experience being on CBG, those funds are like for certain, like, vulnerable populations. Make no mistake, I support the fire department. So please don't think that I'm just asking questions. I support the fire department 100, 1,000%. I support you. But I, from the CBG funds, from my interpretation, that money is meant for certain vulnerable communities. Like, we use that money and especially like with the cuts that are coming, I am very worried about, like, us, we don't know what is going to happen in this new year. I'm worried about us giving that to something or looking for that in that way and not protecting the vulnerable population that we have.
Yeah, so I think that's, I guess, two things to that. One is to keep in mind that we have the service cap for human service agencies. So we're capped at, I think it's 15%. Is that right, Steve? 15? So we're limited in terms of, like, can this money be given to a nonprofit for human service funding? We are pretty much at that cap to begin with. So what we're proposing is expenditures on capital purchases. It's equipment. So that doesn't go against our cap or push us over our cap and it also allows us to spend these funds down quickly. To your point, I think we share those concerns with what's going on at the federal level. And I think there is maybe an under, the fear that this funding may not be there if it's unspent is sort of underscored. We want to get it spent down as quickly as possible across the board, just to be sure that it is not, it's not taken away.
Megan, some of this money's been sitting there for six years. So I'm kind of curious on how it seems like it wasn't noticed or brought to our attention before that. I mean, six years ago, we banked $20,658.97. Then five years ago, we added another $18,813.64. Then four years ago, we added $99,751.21. So has this just been sitting there for a cause like this? I mean, you just said that Steve Carson lets you guys know every year when the money's not being used. How's it been sitting there six years?
So where were you looking, Councilman? What numbers were you just reading off?
So break them down by CDY 44. If you do the math for those three, it comes out to $20,658. I just totaled them all, but that's going back six years, five years, four years, three years, two years. Like, how has this been sitting there that long and it's never been mentioned to us once in the last year and a half?
Yeah, okay. So I just wanted to make sure we were looking at the same lines. So again, I don't think it's, you know, all of a sudden this funding was a surprise and it was found. It's...
Maybe not to you, but so far it's been a surprise to us.
Well, it's more so that, like, Steve has flagged these projects as, you know, they may not be moving forward. Or, Councilman, I didn't answer your question before about the contractual lines at the bottom. Steve can talk more in depth about this, but that was basically the result of updated guidance from HUD about what we can spend salary money on. So that was going, had been allocated to BLDC salaries. HUD released updated guidance that kind of altered what's eligible or our understanding of what's eligible. So that's hanging out there now as unable to be spent and we need to reallocate it. So again, this is not, you know, these are, it's sort of happening on a rolling basis where, like, you'll see there's the 7322 and the public service police overtime. It's just if that's money, that's money that's not being spent down, that's what Steve will kind of take a look at when he compiles those.
Yeah, and that's a minute about, but what about the $49,579 in auditing and financial services? Is that somebody we pay to do audits or is that non-for-profits we're auditing?
I think that's another salary line. Is that right, Steve? So that would have been, that would have been a salary line, like the two contractual.
And then the other thing I have questioned on April 9th, 2025, we voted to amend the 2025 general fund and capital fund budgets for the fire equipment for 16 new recruits. And I remember the conversation on the floor when we asked about other turnout gear, I believe it was Councilmember Kavanaugh. And we were told most of that ends up coming in through grants and it wasn't anything we had to worry about. To being less than two months later, you need turnout gear now for 22 firefighters. So what changed in two months?
Can't speak to that as I wasn't here. I don't know. You can speak generally to the turnout gear.
I think at one point, I think the AFG funding line, they actually supplied the turnout gear. This time, this time, I think it was maybe 10 years ago, we got this grant. I think back then, they supplied the turnout gear that had, that had changed. So that's probably why you were told that. I don't know if it was me that told you that, but I apologize, but they don't fund the turnout gear anymore. And it's, you know, as you know, it's like doubled and tripled in price.
Yeah, everything's doubled in price, unfortunately. So, no, when I, because I don't throw anything away. So when I see something of, something similar to what I voted on before, I always dig it up so I can ask questions.
Could you, Councilmember Murray, did you get your, you never actually got to ask your clarifying question. Was it answered?
No, it wasn't. So Councilman Rathma wanted to, just like articulated that several requests has been made to understand or be aware of funding that is available, right? And I guess, listening to the conversation, I'm a little bit confused because you stated that when there is a need, then you go through a process of looking into the budget to identify funds that could be used to meet the need or the request that is being made. And so if city council is requesting to be aware or to know about unspent funds, why can't that similar process happen? So that we're all in this. It just feels like there's a disconnect. And so maybe I'm missing something. And so that's...
So I think Steve might be able to do a better job of explaining this, but again, because that number of, that dollar figure of what's out there on spent is rolling and changing every day as these agencies spend down what's been allocated. There's not really at any point in time, like, a concrete dollar figure.
So if it's ever changing, right? Let's say today, right? June 16th, we make a request, right? Aren't you then able to say as of this particular date, these are the funds that are available?
I would imagine we'd be able to tell you the, all the funds that have been allocated. Council would be aware of that from past budgets. And then Steve, I don't know how easily Steve would be able to look and see where each agency is at spending down each allocation. But I'm sure he could do that. It would just take time, I imagine.
But he was able to do that efficiently enough to come up with $357,685. So what Councilmember Murray is representing is in fact the exact request that's been made.
So we're asking, I think we're talking about...
One sec, I'm not done. So the buy date, so by June 16th, like, that's what we've asked for.
We're talking about two different things, though. I think that's what I'm...
I don't see how we're talking about two different things. I understand they're reimbursable. I understand that it fluctuates. I understand. Like, I'm, there are areas where I will claim extreme familiarity and expertise and this is one of them. I'm familiar with how the funds work. The fact that we cannot get a consistent report regarding what is currently unspent. If you want to anticipate spend downs, that's fine. Put a column on a spreadsheet for it. But to be, to say that, to ask for a very specific request, because that's the number that was identified and then to follow it up in your response by saying that we can't actually consistently identify a very specific number are two completely inconsistent responses.
I think what I'm saying is those are two completely different things. So it's not that we were asking for, hey, what's all the, what's the total unspent dollars out there? Because that's what's changing and fluctuating on a daily basis versus here's the need is, can you go through, Steve, and as part of your auditing process that you do regularly? Are there projects that you're aware of that are not moving forward or stalled? Or, you know, are there changes where this, you're anticipating this funding may not be spent down? I think we're just approaching it from different ways. However, I will, I will follow that by saying I've not been included, to my knowledge, on any requests for more information from council on this. So if there are specific asks, please feel free to...
There have been several on record in conversation with, whether it was Chuck, whether it was Steve. I mean, I can't give you the exact work session date or email, so that's not going to be a thing I can produce. But the conversation has been had multiple times and we've been, and the reason that we're pushing, I'll just speak for myself, I guess, though I imagine the sentiment is shared. The reason we're pushing back the way that we are is because this request has been, and that we are, we've consistently been told that it's complicated. We've consistently been to, all of us realize that the budget lines fluctuate, that they're reimbursable dollars in some aspects and programs don't spend them, so they don't end up requesting them at the, within the timeline that they're even requested. Like, we get all of that. It's not that we don't understand that. What we don't understand is why we can't land on an amount to understand even quarterly when we're talking about unspent dollars. The fact that, and I keep saying this, $357,000 plus dollars of funding that could be going to critical community needs. I mean, this is a small pot of money, but it does a lot of work. And the fact that it was let to sit in the first place is a big part of the problem. That's, I mean, the mismanagement in that alone, but that it just keeps, you've said that it wasn't a surprise, but to Council President Dundon's point, like, it's consistently a surprise for us. We're like, oh, another ask for unspent dollars.
Yeah, Councilman, if you're, I guess, if you're simply requesting like a status update on what's been allocated and where each of those allocations are at, I think that's probably something that Steve could give an overview on if it's useful.
Actually, Deputy Mayor, seeing that I have to go over the audits for our $120 million pension fund, I want to see a full audit of the CDBG funds. I can read all that. I understand it all. I know it all. And I'd like to see it. Instead of getting spreadsheets that it seems like money disappears. I mean, me and Councilmember Hotchkiss met with you and the mayor talking about the Southern Door Land Trust. None of this money was mentioned when we were talking about trying to get that money. So to me, it seems like somebody knows about it, but it's not council. And now I want all the documentation before I let this go any farther.
Yeah, Councilman, there's not like any sort of hidden documentation or...
Then I want everything. I want everything going back to the year 44. I don't care if it's 10,000 pages.
As I just said, we can certainly provide all the allocations that council would have approved previously and the point in time on what's been spent down.
Please and thank you. I want every documentation to show any project that ended where any of this money wasn't spent, what the contractual services were that weren't followed up with to be over 144,000. I'm tired of seeing like I don't get enough information when I ask and now I'm not gonna, I'm gonna just start slowing stuff down till you, it's provided what we need. I'm tired of playing behind the fiddle and being second when we are the legislative branch.
Yeah, I think that's, I don't think there's any issue with that and we're happy to provide, sort of, work with Steve to provide that, that sort of overview. I just want to bring us back to, I think we're all on the same page here.
No, 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 no. I, we're not asking for an overview. We want a line-by-line accounting of what's not unspent, how it was allocated and what usable alternatives would be.
What usable alternative?
What, what, what would be allowable uses?
It would just be the, whatever is, whatever is CDB eligible or home or ESG eligible.
Yes, but different things have different allowances and caps and stuff that I don't fully understand. Rebecca is far more first in that, but...
It should be in the report. Everyone should have access to that. Everyone in council.
You do have that information. So it's, you have the information of what is eligible under CDBG and HUD and home, excuse me.
I think we've made the request clear. We can switch to talk about, I believe you were moving in the direction of talking about the Binghamton Fire Department, but I think between the comments that were made, we've made the request very clear. It would be helpful for us to send it in writing as a follow-up.
I'm not completely clear on what the, what the information is.
We get much clearer, but we'll go ahead and...
And if you're talking about us reversing the process, right? You contend Rebecca's looking at the process, I'm sorry, Councilman Rathma's looking at the process in the opposite direction of you. So let's say the ask for the fire department need was $557,000. Would Steve have gone to find $557,000? And said, I think I can find, so we're trying to get a sense of what is actually out there and unspent and, and, you know, given, given needs what, you know, where those funds could go.
Yeah, and like I said, Steve will be presenting.
Instead of waiting, like, if he puts them down now, like, doesn't make sense for him to wait, like, for him to come down.
Yeah, he can contribute to the conversation.
So, and Chief, while Steve's coming down, I, so we know the turnout gear kind of has a pretty set shelf life. And so why is this being identified in the middle of the year instead of, we have X sets of these things that are going bad at a certain time? We should, we should kind of have a schedule. And why do I not know that schedule when we're doing the budget? I understand this is a very simple ask. And then same thing with, I understand things happen with fire apparatus and things, but these are new med cars. These are relatively simple asks, things that we could be planning for rather than mid-year requests.
Car was totaled, Med 5. So we didn't really plan on that. And the hazmat van is an older van. It's been very reliable, but it's a 2009. And it needs to tow a, you know, very large trailer and other hazmat equipment. So it's just time to replace it.
So these are, it's not two med cars. It's one med car and one hazmat truck.
Yeah, they're both, they both double as med cars. They're gonna be, we're looking for one-ton pickups with utilities on them. Med 5 out of headquarters will be towing boats and also the med team will be using it for first response. And, or at Engine 3 will be, also be a one-ton utility. They'll be towing the hazmat trailer and foam trailer and will also double as a med car.
All right. And then what about the sort of plan for turnout gear? I mean, why is that not anticipated?
Well, we have a, we usually, we place about five, five sets a year. Last year, we put it in the capital line. We moved it out of the, the regular budget line to the capital line. And I think there's plans to put that back, but, you know, we see a need for it now. Firefighters, the cancer rate has increased dramatically and they've tied it to carcinogens in the gear. So, you know, there's a need for a second set of gear because after firefighters enter a fire, they come back, they're soaking wet. They're covered in soot, carcinogens. They have to wash the gear, have to put a fresh set on, get ready for the next fire. So...
Not disputing the need for the gear, just the timing of the request.
Right. It's, like I said, and we're also, at the same time, we're moving from, you know, just firefighters traditionally have had one set of gear. But now they really need to, because of these increasing cancer rates. And you may or may not know, Headquarters was basically built...
To help isolate the living spaces from the workspaces and all that.
That's right. Yeah, so they actually go through a decontamination process when they get off the rigs and get back into the living area. So our needs have been changing over the last few years.
Chief, with that turnout gear, does that also include the SCBA's?
Not yet. Our SCBA's are, we're probably applying for the grant, the grant in the next three years. I think they're, they're gonna be, they're good for about 10 years, I believe, also.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was five or 10 years. And for council that doesn't know, an SCBA is a self-contained breathing apparatus. If you go underwater, it's called scuba diving.
If, and so you, Chief, you mentioned grants. I mean, if we, at least my sense is that one of the strongest areas where grant funding is still readily and increasingly in some ways available is for first responders, be it federally or at the state level. So if you could speak to whether or not this equipment, the need, the ask would be eligible for existing grant funding, that would be helpful. And then my second, my second question to that is where else in the budget was the funding for this pursued other than CDBG? With 75-plus million general fund, like, where else was funding pursued for this ask?
For turnout gear?
For the ask in general.
Well, the turnout gear was in our uniform line. And like I said, it was moved to the capital line last year. But the SEVA was replaced, oh, that would be about, before I was chief, maybe 10 years ago. And that was through an assistance... before as chief, maybe ten years ago, and that was through an assistance firefighters' grant. That was federal money. That's they're usually approved. It's very commonly approved in that that funding stream. So that's that was our plan for right now to replace the SEVA.
Or right, so for are the are the items identified in this ask also eligible for grant funding? I guess is what I'm hoping to get at.
It it it's probably eligible. You can ask for it, but it's the assistance to firefighters' grants, it's vehicles are very difficult. They they just don't like to give them out. I'm not sure why, but we've asked for apparatus in the past. We've never had any luck. Turnout gear, I'm not sure how readily available it is through the assistance to firefighters' grant. But SEVA is and it's we we did get a state grant a couple of years back for for turnout gear through, I think it was Donald Lopardo and Senator Webb, I think.
Okay, and those have or have not been explored?
They have.
For this?
They have been. Yeah, they were a couple of years ago. Every year.
Specific ask?
Uh, no.
Okay. Is there to your mention of the the vehicles, is there? So are you representing there's currently an issue with department reliability and response time?
Yes.
Is that what you're lending to the urgency of the ask?
Right, yeah, there, take for instance, Med Five. Now, right now, we took the old duty chief's car and we had to put a new engine in it and we're using that temporarily for the med car. It's maybe ten fifteen year old truck. I don't have the date with me, but we had to put a new engine in that. So that's now temporarily towing our boats. And they're using it as a as a med vehicle. And as far as Med Three, the hazmat vehicle, that's that's an older vehicle. Like I said, it's always been reliable, but it's just it it needs to be replaced. It's just has a lot of corrosion, a lot of rust in the frame and the body. So it's 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 just time and it's past its service life.
So Chief, with these vehicles, I know with a lot of different contractors I talk to, it's specialty vehicles. A lot of vehicles are a year out. Is this something that if we allocate, it's still going to be a year before the fire department actually gets them? Or is it something that's kind of been in the works to where you'll guy, you know, the fire department will get it before twenty twenty six?
It it it's possible we can get it sooner. You know, there's the processes, you know, you have to go through the purchase process. Sometimes they're available right away. Sometimes they're not. For instance, there's one sitting downtown right here. It's a it's a Chevy and it's 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 utility. It's got utility on it. It's a truck the size we need. And so there's one available right there. And so it's 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 possible we can get them sooner. That would be our our goal if we could. And then the upfitting, that always takes time. That takes.
Yeah, I'm well well aware of that.
It goes on and on. I mean, you're probably aware.
Chief, you said one of the the vehicles was totaled over here?
Yes.
Um, is there any insurance recovery on that?
I believe so. I think it was around, I think it was around twenty five thousand. It was a, yeah, maybe a five year old vehicle. And so the insurance company is very reluctant to pay for the, you know, the lights and the sirens and everything. They just but it's frustrating, but we did recover money.
Okay, thank you.
How come none of that money that was recovered was included in this proposal? I mean, to me, if I wreck my car and I get an insurance claim, I use it to buy a new car.
Right, um, not to my knowledge, I'd have to you have to talk to maybe the the controller or the. No, no, it doesn't. No. New trucks are gonna be at least a hundred thousand dollars. It's a five year old Ford Explorer.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying it would be comparable, but I mean, I would think some of that would be allocated towards this instead of just the full three hundred and fifty seven thousand plus out of CDBG. Anybody have anything else? Thank you so much, Chief and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
I mean, he's gonna be up at the end, so. Okay. So we're moving on to RL twenty five dash one oh six. That's in the Public Works Committee. I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss, who's the chair, and Ron Lake, our chief engineer, will be our presenter.
This is RL twenty five dash one oh six, a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement number three for the terminal pump station. So what's the latest with the TPS, Chuck or Ron, excuse me?
Good evening. I have an easy one for you.
Okay.
Uh, first, there's a couple clerical errors I'd like to point out. On the agenda, it says supplemental agreement number three is number two. And then on the on the legislative thing, it says adoption date seven ten twenty four. I'd like to change that to seven two twenty five. We did a supplemental one not too long ago where EFC had sent us the terms and conditions that they wanted in the contract. We did. They now tell us that that was a long dated supplement that they sent us, so we're redoing it. That's all that's all there is to it.
Yeah, I know. I looked over everything, Ron, everything. I mean, you always do a good job, at least for the time I've been on council. I've always, you know, you always have all the information I ever asked. And I mean, you you catch two typos that even I miss, so I give you credit for that. Um, I don't have a whole lot of questions on this. I'm just gonna see if any council member does. If not, I did see you were requesting expedition on this.
I did not. Does it check?
Well, Ron, if you don't need to expedite it, I'll say have a good evening unless another council member has a question. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. Next is RL twenty five dash one ten. It's in the Committee of Municipal and Public Affairs. I'll hand it over to the Chair, which is Councilmember Middleton and Sarah Gloss, our Director of Economic Development, is the presenter.
Hey, Sarah.
Hello, how are you?
Good. So this is RL twenty five dash one one zero, a resolution authorizing an agreement with OSRS for Schenango Street Viaduct mural.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, President Dundon, for agreeing to accept this late. I apologize for getting it in past the deadline.
That's all right. We're all humans.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, so I just pass to Councilmember Murray the document that I sent to you guys digitally earlier, which is just the aesthetic basically lookbook for the particular muralist. So this is a resolution authorizing us to enter into an agreement. You'll see the invoice there. We have worked through pardon me, worked with the county and the county as our funder for this. It's a pass through of a grant that originally went to Broome County and is now being sub-allocated to the city of Binghamton as the subject property is a city-owned property. Um, we worked with the list of artists that they had procured through the call for projects when they initially brought this project forward. Gosh, many years ago, I think pre-pandemic, and developed a shortlist and then did interviews with all of the artists to see who could kind of best work within the relatively small budget we have. Um, this muralist is kind of exciting because they're generally much more expensive than something that we could afford with this budget. But they have a program through which if you allow them to use their aesthetic, which is being passed around, uh, they'll incorporate local elements, but they won't uh, charge you as much because they're using some of the aesthetic elements and colors that they've already developed. So it's not as intensive as a of a design. Uh, it's also familiar materials and colors to them, so it's a little bit easier for them to actually perform the work. So ultimately, everyone we talked to was an excellent muralist and would have done a great job on this project. But I think we get a really good bang for our buck with OSRS. So I'm asking this body to approve the entering into the agreement. Based on the conversation tonight, I may request on the floor an expedite of this motion. That really depends on whether this body is comfortable with the level of information they have, and I know this came in late. It would enable me just to move forward a little bit faster and cut, I'm gonna be cutting some deadlines close with getting this approved from COD after the actual design comes through. But if that's not the preference of this body, that's fine. I can work with the July second approval date. I can take any questions.
Do you have an idea about what what of their design aesthetic, what we're asking for or after sort of?
Yes, we have had very extensive conversations about trains. As this is affiliated, well affiliated, adjacent to the train tracks. The artists themselves are very interested in trains and we're very excited about the possibility of incorporating that motif in. Uh, but I do believe we get at least one round of edits um, after they send the initial design. And if there's anything else that this body would like to see represented in that mural, certainly, I'm happy to bring it to them. We have a little bit less creative control with the way that we structured this to meet the budget, but they seem very easy to work with and accommodating.
Question, um, how the the maintenance of it? So will they have to come back and will we have to pay for that again after this is already done?
That's a good question. Um, so no, I part of the good and the bad of murals is that over time they wear, as we've seen across the city. So there is somewhat of just a natural degradation that'll happen over time. Uh, they do use materials that are designed to be in the elements. But I believe the maintenance plan really for all of the murals and mosaics in the county is to kind of let them fade in and wear in over time. Just making sure that the materials that are used upfront are appropriate for the for the context.
Thank you. And and the colors that are in there, they're gonna use some of those colors because they like them. They like they poke out like, you know, you could definitely see the colors in there like that.
Yeah, I believe it'll be the same, the similar, if not the same color palette that's used in the aesthetic lookbook.
Very nice.
Who gets to review the submissions for the call for murals?
Sorry, say that again.
Who reviews the the submissions for the mural?
For the initial call for artists or this, the call for artists that was put out by Broome County Arts Council. They did an RFP and then I don't recall whether a committee of the Arts Council reviewed them or if it was exclusively the county and the state that reviewed the folks that came in. But I I do believe Broome County Arts Council was involved since they wrote the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
You may have said this. What was the delay?
I simply, I had it in my inbox and I didn't realize it was there.
No, oh, no, I'm sorry, not to today's, not to the information we got in general. So you mentioned that it was uh, pre-COVID, that this was originally like planning started. And I guess I under if that was, you know, entirely internal to the county, you may not have that. But I'm just curious why the.
I think it's just a slow process. I know Stephanie Brewer, who was working on this at the county side, did a number of calls for walls throughout the process. There were a number of murals that did not proceed. Building owners couldn't come to terms on what the content of the mural was and had to be mutually agreed upon. Um, there were surfaces that were submitted and ended up not being approved through SHPO. Everything got really delayed during the pandemic and things didn't move forward for a period of time. I know she did a recall for walls where she did not get as much interest as she had had originally and had to put that submission out again. Um, that's actually how we ended up landing on this as a public project as opposed to a private project. The walls that she had in the pipeline just couldn't be approved by SHPO where the material of the actual wall wasn't workable for a mural. So we looked at trying to identify a couple of public sector walls that would work. So I ended up submitting both the Seven Holly Street parking garage and the Schenango Street viaduct into the call for walls. Um, and then she and I kind of went back and forth on what the budget was and realized that the Seven Holly Street parking garage was physically too large to be able to be done with this amount of money pivoted to the Schenango Street viaduct at that point.
I'll make a motion to expedite.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you to seven zero.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
If I can provide any information to help with the drafting of that legislation, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to RL twenty five dash one oh seven. That is in Public Works. The Chair of Public Works is Councilmember Hotchkiss and Deputy Mayor Megan Hyman is our presenter.
This is RL twenty five dash oh one, a resolution authorizing lighting agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for Route three sixty three and four thirty four connector project, also known as the Greenway. Do you want to give us an overview, Megan?
Sure. So both this RL and the next one are related to the State DOT project to rebuild three sixty three. That's scheduled to get underway next year. Um, new lighting is included as part of that project. So the first RL is an agreement that outlines the city's responsibilities. Essentially, we'll be responsible for powering and maintaining those lights once construction is complete. And then I can keep going or the the next RL is related in in that it's also involving that construction project. And just the, there's a police department street camera in that area that will be taken down temporarily during reconstruction. That agreement just outlines that DOT will work with the city to reinstall once construction is complete.
Could you, I know it's in the the plan, but maps aren't my forte. Relocating from where to where, like which, where's the exact location of the street camera, please?
Uh, I I don't know that. I don't know that we disclose that publicly typically. Um, but I I don't know which which street camera they're targeting.
Okay.
So the three sixty three project is like the downtown area where the loops are. Uh, so it'd be within that vicinity. That's what we'll be changing.
Okay, but I could likely, I mean, if there's no public disclosure, sure, but I could likely ask that question internally.
Yes, yeah, to the police chief would be who to direct the question to.
So this is, do we have an estimate of how much this is gonna cost us annually in energy costs?
Well, seeing that they're really just moving the lights as they do the construction, same thing with the water and sewer lines. I'm pretty sure with they'll get, I mean, they're updated lights, so it'll be the same amount we've been paying in the past. I mean, this is a twenty five year agreement with DOT that says that they will cover all the construction expenses and then we'll just maintain and keep the lights energized, which we already have to do throughout the city anyways.
But do we? I mean, there's some portions of State Highway the state puts the the lighting bill. Um, has that been the case for this interchange always or?
So I I don't know who covers it covers it currently. I was gonna say that the the cost is broken out in here and that it is over the twenty five year period. Chuck, do you know if we do we pay the electric on those lights currently? Uh, three sixty three.
Three sixty three.
Okay. But what's broken out in here would basically be, yeah, it spells it out, but it would basically be over a twenty five year period. I think there's a couple different. We can find that out too and.
This is part of, is this at all related to the Memorial Bridge Transformation Project?
Um, it is in the same area. These are separate projects. I think what this is part of what this is proposing is a new lighting for like this riverside trail. So this would probably be this would be a new expense. But this is pretty typical, as I understand it, of what happens with DOT projects um, that the the state might come in and do a big capital upgrade and then the municipality may be responsible for the maintenance and the electricity.
So Chuck, are you, is this a new, is we have a line outlined in the budget to cover the expense already? Or is it the ongoing electric?
I don't know. I'd have to go find out where this bill is actually, if if we are getting paid for it or not.
Yeah, because like the state also moves around those areas on North Shore Drive. So is that, are they, that continues, it's an effect?
Yeah, I would imagine that that continues. Um, they've just come to us with these agreements for lighting in the the police camera, to my knowledge. Yeah, no, and that's we can, we can certainly check to see if we're paying for those lights now. But I do think there there is some additional lighting going in.
Yeah, I think the additional lighting is going around the trail, but we pay for the lighting, just like we're the ones who do the plowing around the dead interconnect, if I remember correctly. If I remember correctly. I don't have anything else if anybody else does.
Just as Chuck will check the bills, just to figure out.
Yeah, I'll try to see if I can bank something.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Seeing that we kind of died. Go ahead.
We don't agree to this, then what happens?
Work doesn't get done, I assume.
Honest question.
I think this is pretty typical of what happens when the DOT comes in and does a project with the local municipality. Um, and also, if you look at the, I don't know off the top of my head, the total cost of this project, but it's a major project to rebuild three sixty three. So what they're putting into it to upgrade the downtown infrastructure and the you know, in the surrounding area, this is pretty small in comparison.
All right. Seeing we touched on it a little bit, this RL twenty five dash one oh nine ties into this because it's a resolution authorizing agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for relocation of a street camera. Was there any more questions that were on that RL since we might as well just wrap them up together? None? Okay, well, thank you so much for that. Chuck, thank you. Megan, you're stuck sitting there, I'm assuming?
I am.
So next is RL twenty five dash one oh eight, that's in the Finance Committee. I'll hand it over to the Chair, which is Councilmember Kavanaugh. And Steve Carson, come on down.
I wasn't as popular in high school.
Okay. So last work session, we had the presentation from you and Justin McGregor on CDAC's spending recommendations.
Correct.
And now we are looking at the revised version that the mayor is proposing.
Yep. So let me just explain this, the 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 sort of standard process here. So CDAC makes a recommendation to City Council and in theory, the mayor's office as well at the same time. The mayor then takes that into account, prepares the budget, which is what you see before you now. I will need at a minimum the next to for City Council to plan a public hearing based off this budget. So it wouldn't be Wednesday, it'd be the Wednesday after or the whatever the next business meeting after. So standard process, no expedition. And then we will, we're going to require a a special meeting on the fourteenth after your work session on the fourteenth to be able to approve the budget. So we're now in the thirty day public review process of this budget. And the plan, the plan is available for the public, just so everyone's aware, the the plan is still in motion. I'm still modifying, editing it. I still got agencies I'm waiting on to give me information. But I can go over what we've got now. The budget's solid in there and we've got all the data from like CHAZ and stuff like that. That's all in there. One unfortunate thing I've not been able to get hold of is the the HMIS data for the pick count. I've got a summary, but it's not going in the blocks. The way the action plan against solidated plan worked, it's not like a free form application. You have to answer question one and question two and question three. And oftentimes it answers the, it asks the same question nine times in a different way. So that's where we're at that. So going back to this, yes, so this is the budget now the mayor is presenting for City Council for the FY fifty one annual action plan, but it will also be approval of the consolidated plan and I can go over the consolidated plan as well.
Believe we have the consolidated plan or the action plan, correct?
Uh, the consolidated plan, there is a paper copy in my office. Like I said, I I am constantly updating it. Um, I can provide the current one we have, the current draft of it.
And then I've received, yeah, Councilwoman, I received your email requesting, I think, the annual action plan this afternoon.
That, well, that email was sent to Steve on Thursday, asking for a copy of the annual action plan and the consolidated plan prior to today's meeting so that we could review it and engage with it in the context of the conversation.
It was finalized Friday night as I was leaving, so I was able to print out a copy and put it on the thing as it was accessible. Technically, the third day period started Saturday. So I did not have it available, but I can send you a digital copy or I can hand send you specific sections or I can answer any questions you may have.
You also just, I think I'm a little frustrated, Steve, because you just outlined a very specific timeline that involves like the following business meeting after the initial presentation and a public hearing and it ends on the fourteenth. The, I also asked very specifically for that timeline on Thursday. Is that brand new information?
No, I mean, this is standard. This is the standard.
I understand that it may be standard, but I asked for it specifically so that I could include it in the context of my consideration for today and I have yet to receive a response. We got what Deputy Hyman submitted today that was helpful in terms of formatting, but the most pit critical part of a budget for me because of how my brain works is the narrative.
Yeah.
And it's those actual plans, like that's what you're asking us to move forward and I I'm not comfortable moving something forward that I've not been able to read through.
We can provide that tomorrow, Councilwoman, and Steve can take any questions now. And I can also give an overview of the the mayor's proposed budget, which was what was sent today.
Do we want to send it to the committee?
I mean, you have until the fourteenth to approve it, so there is ample, ample time.
And yeah, we're also happy to attend the committee if that's if that's easier. Or we can answer.
I think there are lots, I mean, I don't think I'm the only one with questions. So if we can do questions plus send a committee, that certainly would make sense in my head, but.
I think, yeah, I think that works because if there is there's information we need to track down, we can have it in time for the committee meeting.
Any questions I have, I'll email you two directly.
That would be great.
I've I've got maybe one that you could take a shot at. Uh, what, if there are major changes or even small changes that the mayor made to the CDAC's recommendations, like what? What are those?
Yeah, so I can I can, I guess, just give sort of an overview on on our budget proposal and I think speak to that question specifically a little bit. The one thing that I would point to this year's budget is not substantially different from what we've done in years past, but the one thing that I would point to as a difference that's worth noting is the minimum grant amount for this year. So City Council might recall that the city raised the minimum grant to twenty five thousand dollars this year. So this was part of an effort to improve efficiency and really increase the impact that the impact of the programs that the city supports with the limited funding that we have available to us. So some of where you'll see those differences between CDAC recommendations and the mayor's office budget, that's a result of that new minimum grant amount. CDAC had some recommendations that came in under the twenty five thousand dollar minimum. So the the budget from the mayor kind of addresses those those discrepancies, if that makes sense.
Right, but where were they specifically?
Do you have a cup, a copy of the the CDAC recommendations? Was Council provided that?
Uh, not on me today.
Okay, but you 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 have it, correct?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know that I have it spelled out.
I can run through that quickly if that's at all helpful, Councilmember Hodgkins. I think it's, I mean, again, that should be something that is readily available to be spoken to since we're literally reviewing the budget, but uh, just to quickly from, and correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, under youth programming, CDAC recommended twenty thousand for Boys and Girls Club Summer Program that was up to twenty five. Boys and Teen Center, CDAC recommended twenty up to twenty five. So most of these under youth programming are because of that twenty five thousand minimum. After school programs, CDAC recommended fifteen, it was bumped to twenty five. Backpack Program, CDAC recommended ten thousand, it was bumped to twenty five. CDAC recommended ten thousand for vines, it was bumped for twenty five. If we flip and go to public infrastructure and I'll have to pause here because I do have a couple of very specific questions on this one. Under parks improvements, the rec park upgrades were the same level that CDAC recommended. However, the mayor removed the one hundred and sixteen and change thousand for Alfred Street Park upgrades and replaced the sixty they can, the mayor removed the CDAC recommended amount to replace the American Legion post eighty roof and replaced it with funding sixty five grand for the Phelps Museum roof upgrade, which CDAC had recommended zero for. Could you speak to first the removal of the Alfred Street Park upgrades? And oh, actually, and I should put in here too, sixty five thousand was removed in upgrades to Phelps Parks Basketball Court. Could you speak to those two removals and why the Phelps Museum roof improvements were replaced? Uh, replaced the American Legion's roof upgrades despite CDAC recommending zero funding?
Sure. So I think with the, I guess I'll just preface that, preface this by saying obviously the city has a limited amount of funding. Part of what we're charged with is identifying the projects and the programs that will have the greatest impact with that limiting funding that we have available and we're not able to fund everything. So there are sometimes difficult decisions that have to be made as part of this.
CDAC already I think that I understand that broadly, but CDAC did that deliberation with that same understanding. So my question would be specifically to why after CDAC did that deliberating and landed on a recommendation within the budget amount for what can be used, why the mayor would change it?
So so CDAC and as part of its budget did not incorporate that new twenty five thousand dollar minimum. So that changed kind of the bottom line fixture figure where when changes are made to address that.
But that twenty five K was set by the executive branch, not by the federal government, correct?
That that was set by, yes, by the the city as a way to respond to some of the red tape and regulations at the federal level around HUD funding.
But the administrative costs of dealing with smaller amounts of money.
Yes, yes. And that's something that Steve can definitely talk in depth about. It's the the administrative costs on on the city staff's end in term of that in terms of administering these contracts, but then also some of the challenges that red tape poses poses to the agencies itself and spending down funding on in a timely manner. Which goes back to what we were talking about earlier in the in the evening.
I had a question. No, I do understand. I do understand like the twenty five thousand and administrative, but I also feel like we can still help more people. And I'm I'm still, I'm like a Councilmember Rathmo, how did we get to the Phelps Mansion when there, when it was recommended for the American Legion? Like, how does that, how do you make a decision like that when there it was recommended for the roof for the American Legion, but now the Phelps Mansion is getting that instead? So how does that?
Sure. And I apologize, I never answered your questions about those specific projects. So we had, the city received funding requests for a couple of different roof replacements this year. The American Legion was one of them, Phelps was one of them. I I can't speak to why CDAC didn't make the recommendation for the Phelps roof. But
I I know why they, I know why they did the American.
They told us.
Yeah, they told, they told us why they did the American Legion because it's not only a place that veterans go, it really helps out the community. They're able to rent, they're able to let the community rent out these spaces for a lower price. So it's kind of more of a community center legion than to, it it definitely helps out the community.
They also represented that the Roberson Project, the Phelps Project identified in interviews that there were other funding sources and and grants and donations that they could potentially access for use. So they, I mean, they, that was something they very specifically guessed that we asked about and.
Yeah. And also I I can say for what CDAC, I think every recommendation that they make and what they make, they definitely look for other like sources of funding first before they use that because they know that it's a limited, it's limited for the city to give. So I, the goals that Justin and Mary Ann and the their goals are to make sure to see if they have other funding and they always ask whoever interviews. Whoever they interview, is there other sources of funding first? And I, and I, that was the reason why they chose, you know, the American Legion for that reason.
Were they, was the American Legion saying there was not other funding available?
They weren't, they didn't have anything at the time, but more so it was helping the community.
Okay, good, because I think that my understanding is one of the the concerns with the American Legion project is they had no other funding sources identified. So the money that the that CDAC recommended being allocated to them would not have covered the total cost of of the project. Um, and that's sort of where we can get into these situations where capital projects or other projects with these agencies don't move forward when they are allocated funding, but then do not have other funding sources identified to complete the project.
Okay. And speaking of that, I'm sorry. Speaking of that, Steve, when do you know when the the money is not spent by, like, how do you know, like, exactly, like, this project is not going forward? How, when do you know that?
So it really only, it's each type of pool of money. So for example, service program, capital funding, salaries. We don't know right away when it's going to be done. The only one we really kind of know of is service programs because they follow the calendar year. In theory, the capital project should as well. However, and we run to this for the last several years, we have agencies that get capital projects and then they sit on it because they're either waiting for additional funding or do something like do it before the ER is done and then they try to get it reworked and come in through a different angle or something else, you know, pops up, you know, a good example. Yeah, a good example, we try cities opera. Over the course of two years, I think forty seven, forty eight, two different grants for them to do a roof. They did the roof wrong before the ER is done, so they they wanted to get applied to something else. The mayor had no problem with that. We were going to do a historical stabilization. And then they went and did something really weird with their roof through a state historical grant, which dehistoricized or however you would say it, the building unless they fixed it back. So now we can't put the CDBG money into it until it becomes a historical building again. And that's the kind of complications we get to for a lot of these capital projects.
And so when do you know, so when do you know though, like, so even though all that, I understand all the like perks and things, but when do you actually know, like, hey, we have this extra money?
And like I said, service programs, we pretty much know at the end of the year. All the other programs can take a while. Police over time, park rangers, we try to not move money out of pools that have been allocated to because as you guys have said, CDAC is done through, the mayor's done through City Council approval. So if the city, CDAC and mayor come to a conclusion that you need to put twenty thousand dollars in salaries, we don't like moving that out of salaries unless we absolutely have to. So we will try to dip into that, those older monies when we can. So that's kind of the issue with that is that's one of the reasons these sort of older monies will get caught up. And then at some point we'll come along, we'll go, okay, we got enough that we can do a bigger project. So.
So so this year, coming up this year, we will all, all of all of us on council, if there's anything left over, we will be notified, correct?
So it's not, but again, it's not, I think with the service programs, maybe because the contracts will end, but these capital projects.
We should be notified for everything, though, not just service and cap, like, we should be notified, like, what is going on because then the following year, they'll come, they'll come back down and say, oh, we found this money here. And we're like, what the heck is that? If we're notified at the end of the year, hey, this is what's left over. And then going forward, we can, it won't be like any mix up if there's clear communication. Like, like Steve just said, at the end of the year, you should know those things. Or when you do know those things, we should be notified. So then that where there isn't any miscommunication there.
Yeah, I think we can provide like a point in time look and I I think that should be included in the documents that Chuck Robinson sends. Like a point in time look at what funding is in in each account, but.
What do you mean? I'm sorry. I don't get that.
Like, because again, it's, Steve, unless I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding or I'm doing a really poor job of explaining this, it's not like the year closes and like, we, you know, there's all this leftover funding, like a lot of these projects are carrying into future years.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I, we understand, I, we fully understand that. What what I'm saying is that if there is something that is not allocated and if there is something left over, we should be notified.
When Steve picks up the phone and calls a nonprofit agency and says, where are you in your project? And it's clear the project isn't happening, we need to get a notification.
It's often not clear, though. Like, for example, in that fire department grant, one of the lines was like funding for for churches, I think, to upgrade. like funding for, for churches, I think to upgrade their rail sites that was done like under Mayor David. Some of those churches is because they didn't have all the same level of familiarity administering grants. Um, we're working literally for years to spend down that money. And it's not like one day they said to us, like, it's over, we're not doing this project anymore. It's just, it, it kind of phases out, um, leadership changes and the, and the project isn't happening. So I think that's the point I'm trying to make. It's not.
Maybe every project with the green, yellow, red, like, hey, this project is definitely not happening. Yellow, hey, this money may become available and green, we're pretty confident this money is going to get spent out so that we can make some estimations on how much money we might be able to.
Probably, probably your best, when I do the CAPA report in the fall, at that point, the service agencies should have quoted up, closed out their programs that end at the end of August. So at that point, I can give you a snapshot of what agencies didn't expend the funds. And then we can say what the current, so pretty much for every budget, all of that money is allocated. One exception is probably, or the exceptions would be Choto projects and then like the rehab project. Cause other, those are city side client based types of projects. So we could definitely give you a photo, a, a snapshot in time and say, okay, we obligated this amount, this amount is spent, this amount's unspent. And then possibly notes on, uh, agencies if they're having trouble spending it, certainly. I could do that like that point in time every year.
I'm going to ask our, our council. So can we just call the organizations and ask them for where they are with their financials so that we, I mean, it seems like maybe there's a disconnect and we just need to go straight to the organizations and interface with them because we can't, I mean.
I mean, Shannon does that, Shannon does that now. Shannon actually does that now. She, and Shannon in my office will call them up. I've told her multiple times this year, call up agency X and yell at them. Because we need to figure out why they're not spending the money.
statuses of who's at risk, when they're at risk. Well, they're, maybe not be a dollar amount, it may just be a status.
That's just what Steve's office does every day though. Like it's working with these agencies to help them spend down their dollars.
Yeah, but we don't get it though.
Then that's, I think that's what, that's where we're not understanding. Why if it's being represented as something that Steve's office does daily and conversations that he's having regularly, why we wouldn't be able to establish a regular report? And I think Council President Dundon made his request very clear. And I would second that the full audit of the forty-four to forty-seven year that we're, I mean, that we were talking about with twenty-five, one oh five. So I think we have two very specific ask. One is the full audit of C D B G and I would add in other, uh, E S G home COVID related, but, and a, at least a quarterly, if not real time snapshot, m- monthly on the spent versus unspent remaining likely to move forward or not. If you're, because all of what has been said tonight would represent to me that that is information you are getting at regularly. What we are requesting, because we ultimately are the ones that are asked to approve or not approve these allocations. We're not trying to put a barrier up or slow anything down, but if we're going to make a decision, we take that responsibility seriously. And we need the information in order to inform those decisions.
So the minimum spending requirement generally in our contracts is every four months. Would that be satisfactory?
Compared to seeing money that's been sitting for six years, it'd be satisfactory to me. Okay.
And I, I, and honestly, I think once this, once we get that, it would definitely alleviate like the tension of us not getting the information. So that way we can make the right decision. Also, when something like, um, the chief comes down here, we know these things already, we're informed. And it won't be a bunch of back and, back and forth. It, it would make the process a lot easier.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think just some openness on what the executive branch's priorities are when money comes up so that we're clued in. And that if there's, you know, that we can have discussion on the, on the priorities list. Um, that's kind of where I started this out. It was like, yeah, I agree. I'd like to understand the money better. But, um, I'd also just like to, it just seems like, okay, this project was fucked out of air. And, uh, like to know what was, I'd like to at least know that there was a lot of thought that went into and that there was, you know, used to having a rubric, trying to work through comparing, uh, cost benefits of the different types of projects one would spend money on. And it just feels like it was selected based on a conversation instead of a thoughtful process. And maybe that's not true, but that's how it comes off in this meeting. Um, so I, I'm, I'm interested in whatever rubric or projects that you compared and looked at and were considering. And you said, this is the one, um, to understand how that came to be.
Yeah. I think we're, we are always happy to answer questions and talk about our, the, the mayor's priorities. Um, those are conversations that happen every day, multiple times a day, uh, in the mayor's office. It's different departments coming to the mayor with different needs. Um, and like.
But that's, that's what's tough for us, Megan, is you guys work here full time. We are not in here full time. So a lot of times presenters don't come down with information we need. Or it might even be a question we don't even know to ask because we are part-time employees trying to do a full-time job.
Yeah. And whatever we do, uh, honestly, whatever we can do to help bridge that gap, I'm happy to. Um, I'm just trying to kind of give the context from our perspective that those are conversations that happen every day. And a lot of thought goes, goes into all of that.
I'm specifically curious what other projects are approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that could be used with this money that you're aware of that the city needs. And again, that's not to say anything negative against this project. This project does seem like a great project. But I, I'm just want to understand the, what was ruled out in order to get us here.
Yeah. I can tell you what would be ruled out would be service programs and demolitions to make sure we don't exceed caps. And if the mayor wanted to put it in admin and planning, I would have a conversation, would we do some crunchy math to make sure that we don't go over limit there after that?
So as far as you're aware, there is nothing else that came before you that department heads needed or wanted that would qualify for this money that, that this could be used for only the fire department in this whole city, only the fire department would qualify for this money.
So again, this goes back to the, the point that I was making right at the beginning of the conversation is I think we're looking at this two different ways. It's not that Steve came to us and said like, hey, I found, I found three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. The fire department, as, as other departments do throughout the year, came to us and said, we have this need for turnout gears and vehicles. And we work with the departments to try to find the funding.
To understand the difference in the statement that you just made. So what you just communicated was, was that it's not as though someone announced that these funds were available, right? A request was made and then the funds were identified. But in my brain, I don't understand the, the.
Yeah, no, so I, I.
The distinction that you're.
Yeah. It's not as if Steve came to us and said, here's this money, we have to find a way to spend it. The fire department came to us as other departments.
You're also, Megan, you, you've said this multiple times today that you aggressively, you work with, with Steve to spend down the money when it becomes available, that you've represented that multiple times tonight. So it seems like you keep talking in circles. It's, it's really frustrating for myself and I'm sure other members of council.
I don't know what you mean by that, councilman. Um, maybe I am just like inherently not.
There's daily conversations, which is great. You're full-time workers, having conversations, that's positive. Um, but those, the outcomes of those conversations mean that you are clued in to money coming down. Being likely to be available and working with that. But I think what she's saying is that in this case, instead of him saying, we have the money, that his boss is coming to him and saying, find this money.
And the money, the, the money was identified, right? And so to me, it doesn't matter whether it's identified because a need is articulated or we're volunteering that these funds are available, right? And I think that that's the conversation that needs to be had because the funds were there, right? Regardless of whether someone said, we have this unmet need and now the funds are being made available to them, to the fire department. And, and I don't think, I think we're on the same page and no one is questioning that. I think that you're making this distinction that, um, you're, you're making a distinction about the fact that the funds were not just kind of volunteered and a request was being made. But if the funds were available, then council should have been aware of it. You are now coming to us with a plan with funds that were available instead of us being aware that these funds are available in the first place. Does that make sense?
I think so, but it's again, these are just funds that have been allocated, but have not yet been spent by the agency. So there, it's in different stages of, of, of flux. Am, am I?
But a snapshot in time is possible. I think we've es- established that, which further, I think, makes Councilmember Murray's point. The, Steve, so we understand, I believe, that we're close enough to the fifteen percent cap to not use the unspent funds on human services. They also can't be used on demolition dollars. But other capital projects, capital would be an eligible activity for these unspent funds.
Low mod capital projects only. You couldn't do a historical, that falls under the same category as demolitions.
Sure. But I mean, so capital is the general, if we're talking eligible uses of these unspent funds. And if there's one primary need, it's, it's affordable capital projects.
I do have a clarified question. If the need wasn't presented, um, by the fire department, what would have happened? So these funds would have been available, right? Um, and if that need wasn't communicated, how would this have played out? Those funds would have just sat there?
This happens on a regular basis. Like Steve and I have come down to council at, at least once that I can recall, um, to make sure that unspent funds are, are being allocated and are not hanging out there indefinitely.
So are you saying that?
Councilmember Ray, hang on one second. If that was the case, how is there unspent funds from six years ago? If you came down at least to this council once to get rid of unspent funds?
Because again, these are certain projects that were maybe stalled at different times. We got new HUD guidance from HUD on the salaries, like this is.
So, but when you came down to get rid of unspent funds, the last time you weren't aware of the funds from fiscal year, what was that, forty-four?
The same funds would have all been, would have all been marked as unspent as, as, and, and more than that as agencies work to spend them down.
So how long do you give an agency that you leave money allocated to them before you realize the project isn't done? Is, in theory, is it normally three years or two years? I mean, obviously it's been up to six years for some of this, but I mean, there's got to be a way after so many years you realize. I mean, some of those years are pre-COVID.
Yeah.
I, I'll let you speak more to it because you work more closely, but it varies based on the agency and, and the project.
Yeah.
But so then in theory, a project can say they're going to get other funding elsewhere and that money can stay allocated in limbo for a decade?
Well, again, remember, so this is different from a standard, hey, we got some money in public service funding. We found a public service project. This is an amendment to the action plan. We don't like doing amendments to the action plan unless we absolutely have to. Ideally, they're allocated to pools of money. We want to reuse those pools of money. So we have money in services. We'd like to use services. But again, as I've said, services are more difficult because it's easy to go over cap. Um, salaries, theory, if we overuse salaries, we can go back and pull older salary money. Uh, this is actually an amendment to the action plan. So this is basically just a cleanup of all these old unspent funds. Uh, we, you know, basically made a determination, we're not going to spend them in the categories they're in. They're old. They go back to forty-four, pre-COVID even, I get that. And so now we're looking, okay, we have a project, we identify it and we can utilize these in, in one fell swoop.
Is there a way to, like when we're doing the budget stuff to, um, when we do these cleanups to move it to contingency? Cause maybe that's the most transparent way, if we could put it into some empty categories and then have a discussion about how we're going to separating out the two, right? Cause that seems to be one of the issues, right? We want to separate and have a discussion about where the money is, where it came from. And then we have, have a discussion about how we want to spend it. And right now, uh, when you propose it altogether, you've already found us how you're going to spend the money.
Exactly.
If there's a way, uh.
Each contingency would be an amendment to the action plan. So each time you do that, it would be an amendment to the action plan.
Or what are the downsides of doing that?
Uh, it's a thirty day public, uh, public process. You have to have, uh, a public hearing, I think. Oh, no, you don't have to have a public hearing. It's just thirty pay, thirty day, uh, public process. We put an add in the paper, we have to come to city council just like this, uh, and ask for the change and the switcheroo of the whole thing. Um, also it needs to be allocated, it needs to be put into a grant line with the, uh, program year. I'd, I'd have to have Chuck or finance talk more about that because we're trying to get more into, uh, making sure we stay our grant years within munis, match the grant years within IDAS to make sure there's no confusion there.
I mean, I, I'll throw that out until we can figure out a better process that might be something we can do.
I think we can touch on that in a.
One, one thought is that, you know, rather than putting it into a contingency account, um, whether or not there's, I mean, I, I understand council wants a number, um, in terms of like what funds are both unspent and unavailable. Um, my caution with moving them out of a line into a contingency type line is whether or not that would expose it to some sort of clawback. Um, so I, I understand wanting to identify that number of available and unspent funds. I don't know that it's necessarily a good idea to amend the action plan and move it into some sort of account to then move it out of a gap.
I, I do think that makes a lot of sense. Um, I think, one, we've already talked about moving this conversation into committee. I still have a bunch of questions, so, um, but I think the, again, to reiterate, so the expectation of the full audit was made and the every four month representation for C D B G, E S G and home. So I think we, I want to make sure, being very clear on record, those are the three present explicit requests. Um, and we'll likely get into protocol conversations in a committee meeting. To get back to the priorities piece, um, because this piece wasn't answered. What was the trajectory of thought for removing the one hundred and sixteen point seven thousand for Alfred Street Park upgrades and the sixty-five thousand for the Phelps Park Basketball Court? So one question. And then the demo budget, which was ex, like very intentionally reduced by C D A C, um, was increased by the mayor by a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So could you speak to those three pieces, please?
Right. Yes. So the parks projects for Phelps and Alfred, I imagine those are projects that will look to fund going forward, possibly as part of this coming budget process. It's just.
That, can you just say that again, please? I didn't hear you.
Sure. Um, so for the parks projects, I think there were four in total that were considered. We are funding two of them. Um, Webster and Rec. And then the other two will, will look to fund, uh, going forward. So likely will, this will be back, um, in, in the upcoming budget process. Um, and then what was your other question, councilman?
Uh, excuse me, C D A C recommended two hundred thousand in the demolition budget, particularly because the mayor had asked for an additional, I believe, two hundred and fifty grand increase in the prior year's budget. So they reduced that down to two hundred thousand for this year. Um, identifying that demolition is not a, an effective or strategic development approach or redevelopment approach. Um, and the mayor opted to increase that by one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars back up to his preferred amount.
Sure. So I think just generally everyone's aware that blight removal and neighborhoods is a priority of the mayor. Um, I think this year particularly, we are waiting for the county to finalize their foreclosure, closure list finally, um, which has sort of been on pause since, um, around COVID. So, um, once that's finalized, we'll be able to start working with the county again to get for county foreclosed properties, uh, for demolition. So we're anticipating more properties, uh, coming, uh, coming that way.
I would want to represent, I think in, in that full context, the planning committee did meet to discuss a, what protocol is followed in demolition decisions. And I think at the very least, if there's any increase again being requested for demo, that demolition budget line item, then then we need some kind of representation of what standard process is followed to determine redevelopment potential versus, because we've consistently run into a non-standard process that has followed, been followed for demolition.
For when the city acquires a property, determining whether it's to be used for demo or rehab?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think just, just broadly, we rely on our vacant property officer and the, the code department, um, and the engineering department to inspect the property and, uh, see if it, it is, uh, in need of demolition or if it can be rehabbed. We kind of have in the past partnered with like the land bank, for example, on properties that are still salvageable to rehab them. It's just a very like high level.
Right. We've gotten. Right. We've gotten, I think that's what I'm getting at. Like, we've gotten the high level, like gen- generally we do this. But also the response ranged from Mayor Kram representing in the planning committee meeting that when you do this long enough, you get a kind of a sense. And there's a, there's a big difference between a standard protocol that is followed to strategically determine redevelopment potential versus something being a safety concern. And a high level, this is kind of what we generally do. So that I'm hoping to get at the protocol and we've not gotten that yet. And I think we've also made clear, if it doesn't exist, I mean, we're happy to be in those conversations, make some recommendations, but.
Draft up a flow chart. A flow chart.
Does anyone else have anything else? Does anybody have anything else?
Um, the, one last thing, what did you say about the vacant property officer? I'm sorry, forget.
Uh, that he will assist them whenever we have city-owned properties, um, with inspecting them on, determining.
We don't have one anymore, correct? Are we getting a new one or?
No, we do. It's John Weskey.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Making sure.
Just to quickly bounce back into a specific, um, about forty percent of this, uh, uh, of this funding is those two contractual lines. And it was mentioned that there are salaries that were determined to be ineligible. And I'm just kind of wondering what the timing of that process was because we, these are three and four years ago.
This is in there, the initial.
Two seventy-two thousand dollar lines, the contractual lines.
But this is the RL with the fire department.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you want to speak to that, Steve?
Well, since we had Steve down, we didn't have Steve down.
The contractual line is BLDC salaries. Um, just be, I don't know why it got named that, but that's the BLDC salary line. Um, we changed a few years ago, we changed the way.
Covers who?
Uh, BLDC, so that would be everyone in economic development.
So it's, it, it, it should be the economic development office line, really.
Uh, yeah, you could, I could call it either one. I mean, they're interchangeable as far as I, I'm, I'm concerned with that. Um, but yeah, economic development or BLDC. Um, these are salaries, but a, a few years ago HUD came in and said, we were doing, um, our salaries for code enforcement wrong. And so we revamped the process for doing code salaries, but at the same time, we sit, we tell ourselves internally, okay, we're doing this wrong. We need to do all of our salaries correctly now. And we went through a very exhaustive process, which is unfortunately why we have a lot of older salary lines, uh, in that stuff that need to be used. Um, and now we track salary down to the half hour. Um, and for example, BLDC or economic development, um, the problem with them is it's difficult. And it's actually difficult for any of the salaries because you have to track your time in your time sheets that you're doing CDBG time. And then there's other things involved, like for example, economic development, with similar to code enforcement where we have to go through a lit list. Um, and I've not done it for the most recent quarter or four month period. Um, we have to go through a list and determine a percentage of their HUD time that is reimbursable. And it's just, it's just because of the system we're trying to do to maintain and keep sort of a HUD standardization for, um, how we track time and hours. This is also the reason we don't even ask for ESG admin funds anymore. It's why we don't ask for legal funds, legal salaries anymore. As, okay, that's why we don't really do finance salaries anymore, although we do do audits. Just because those things aren't really tracked. Although I have a discussion with finance and we've, uh, the last few years, we were trying to figure a way of using up the finance lines, but we really couldn't come to something that was clear, uh, and would meet the HUD requirements. So when you see contractual within the legislation of old, old salaries or in this stuff, it's economic development salaries. I don't know why they call it contractual. I think because we used to enter in a contract and there's this weird pass-through system, um, which I believe we're changing or about to change instead of just paying the city back directly. But that's an estimation of the amount of salaries that they will do that will be eligible based off of the last, you know, period of time, twelve months or so. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. Raises other ones, I guess. Um.
Did you say the M or was that Steve? Continue. I don't want to interrupt if you're.
No, 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 go ahead if you have thought.
In it, well, and this would be to the code eligibility piece. So I'd be moving on from the BLDC, if that's okay. Um, because you mentioned it, so the, the, the mayor did increase, CDAC recommended two hundred thousand for code enforcement, the mayor updated to two hundred and twenty thousand, which I'm never going to be against increasing opportunities for enhancing code operations. But what is confusing to me is that that number was landed on specifically because of that eligibility process that you just represented. So there was a very specific dollar amount that the, that code enforcement services were eligible for based on the list that you look at, the, the, uh, I mean, the geolocation process that you go through to determine participating jurisdictions. So does the mayor have, with that bump of twenty thousand, is there, is there something we're missing in terms of there's a restructure in code enforcement operation so that they can be eligible for that much of an amount, like for that increase? Or what was the conversation there?
I, I don't know exactly why. It could be just that I had recently done the code salaries and so we might've been able to give them more up to date. Oh, this was, this was the last period of time, therefore multiply and that's our estimation. It does vary quite a lot. Because it's based off of location and also as to whether it's a deteriorated property.
No, yeah, no, that part I get. So would you anticipate, like, at what point, though, can you say this is the full, total, final amount that's going to be eligible to? Cause we want to be able to allocate as much to code enforcement that's eligible through CDBG as possible.
I'll never know. There'll never be a time where I can tell you the exact dollar amount. Because again, it's based off of their actual, the, the actual reporting to and the salaries they generate themselves.
But we are trying to maximize salaries. So that's what this number reflects.
Okay. So just to be clear, that is, you said it might be, you said that, that it does. So just to be clear, the increase was because you pulled a, a new eligibility, a ma- eligible amount. And that's, so there was no other discussion otherwise of what the additional funding could be or should be put to?
I, I think it's just us trying to maximize the, the salaries for the various departments.
Okay.
Including code.
And so going back to what we'd said before about why we have these older lines, let's say we spend all of the code salaries or spend all the BLDC salaries or planning or admin. One thing we would do is if, at the end of the year, let's say we roll up the salaries, we have, oh, well, we have more eligible salaries than we allocated this year. We would have gone back to those older lines, old, going back to the oldest and tried to pull that money going forward. That's kind of how we did it. But at a certain point, you just say, okay, let's pull it together, redistribute it to something else.
Anyone else have anything?
Yep. Um, I'm gonna bug you about the, the fair housing study.
Hmm.
Is.
I didn't have it, I didn't get it yet. Uh, they called me Thursday and said they'd have something to me today. I don't have anything yet. I do want to incorporate it in the quality plan and the actual, any one plan. Um, so there, there's only certain parts of both that it will fit into. Um, but yeah, we're still waiting on the, the draft for that. Once I have the draft for it, I will be able to pass it on.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Anyone else? Steve, Megan, thank you so much. Hope you have a wonderful evening. Seeing that we have nothing else on our.